Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council meeting for this Monday, August 21, 2023. It's good to see everyone here in person and certainly those friends and neighbors attending by Zoom. So Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson has been excused. Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Bokey?
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter?
Here.
Councilmember Lorisella? Deputy Mayor Moss?
Here.
And Mayor Whalen?
Present.
You have a quorum?
Very good. Thank you very much. And now if you'd please rise and join me in a brief moment of silence to acknowledge the losses across the state due to the wildfires, both in our community as well as throughout the state, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in throning.
Well, again, thank you for joining us on this sunny Monday evening. We normally start our agenda with proclamations and presentations, and we don't have any this particular evening. So we'll turn now to public comment. Public comment is accepted by mail, email, or certainly live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher, here at 6,000 Main Street Southwest in Lakewood. You can certainly send them to her email address at B Schumacher at the city of Lakewood.us email address. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to all of us electronically. And for purposes of establishing a record, we ask that the clerk read the names of those who submitted comments in advance.
Mayor, we received written comments in advance of this evening's meeting from Allison Eller.
Thank you very much. So certainly, we welcome you all here. Members of the audience may comment on items pertaining to matters related to city business under the public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes each, and we ask that folks, when they line up to the queue at the podium, just announce your name of residence and proceed with your public comments, such as Paul Bokey, Lakewood, and then you'll have your three minutes to speak. Again, virtual comments are also allowed, and so if you'd like to provide live virtual comments, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782 and the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373. And then, once you're in the room, use the raise the hand feature to be called upon, and the clerk and I will notice those who are here and will call upon you sequentially. So what we try to do is to trade off between those who are appearing by Zoom and those who are here in person as to who was up first, and tonight, those who are on Zoom or are appearing via phone will be called upon first, followed by those of you who are here in person. So Madam Clerk, I'll let you call upon the individuals there. I have no names. So again, when you're called, please state your name and residence for the record, and then you may proceed. The first one is number 929326. Good evening.
Hello, is that, are you going, still going by name?
Sure, but we need to have you identify yourself by name first.
Okay, well, my name is Dennis Hogan, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. You know, it's interesting watching you. You know, if you take a quart, a quart pan, put it on a stove, try to pour a gallon into it, you'll probably get some kind of steam. The purpose of math is for you to be able to, in some ways, predict or anticipate what's going to happen if you do something. You've got to use numbers. And it was, it was very, it was very, um, I don't know, weird to watch you interviewing somebody who wanted money for a social service, talking about reducing and increasing this kind of problem and that kind of problem. Problem is with these social services, you've never established any way of measuring or auditing so that you know what you're looking at. And of course, the proper way to do that is by comparables. Nothing is perfect. It's always who can do the job the best. You know, and I, a few years back, if you remember, I showed some movies on Acorn, which was a nationwide operation supposedly to help poor people. And if you recall, a gal by the name, a gal about 22 years old got the idea of doing an undercover audit. What did we find out? We found out that we got government money going into helping people start a prostitution business. And, uh, you know, you look at, uh, you look at the riots and defunding the police, it just seems obvious that there's a whole population of people who don't understand mathematics, how to use it. You know, and it's, uh, it seems like you put yourself along with California and Oregon and other cities. It's like you're turning away from civilization. Homeless people, everybody, but nowhere, everywhere, but nobody will audit to see who's buying those drugs that are brought up here by illegal immigrants. The reputation and the image, in my opinion, has just gone down, down, down for the last three years. It's been about three years and two months since I left here. But it sure, sure looks like something else, I'll tell you. Thank you.
Next is Casey Twigs.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Hi, Casey Twigs Tacoma. Um, thank you for having me, Mayor Whalen and, um, and city council members. I represent the Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium. I'm here today to lend our support for Resolution Number 2023-08. Um, this resolution, which proposes an allocation of $2.175 million to Lhasa for the construction of Gravely Lake Commons, it's a significant step towards addressing our community's, um, pressed need for affordable housing. Um, the consortium is a nonprofit membership organization. We're dedicated to fostering the growth of affordable housing throughout Pierce County. Our membership includes diverse range of stakeholders, such as affordable housing developers, social service providers, contractors, architects, funders, and advocates. Um, among our esteemed members is Lhasa, an organization we are exceedingly proud to have in our ranks. We wish to express our sincere gratitude to the city of Lakewood for its allocation of home and ARPA funds to support Lhasa um, in their vital project. We previously testified in February advocating for increased funding, and we're heartened to see that council shares our commitment to advancing this project and its willingness to dedicate additional financial resources. Um, as you all are aware, our county is grappling with a severe shortage of affordable housing options. Projects like Gravely Lake Commons play a vital role in alleviating this housing crisis and providing a much-needed relief for families in the dire need of housing. Um, the city of Lakewood's investment in such properties, um, represents hope in these challenging times. Um, additionally, we are delighted to see the allocation of funds towards MDC for rent relief. It is worth emphasizing that in Pierce County, an individual needs to earn $32 an hour to afford a one-bedroom apartment, which is a stark contrast to the average hourly wage in Lakewood, which stands at about $20.41 according to PayScale. Um, rent relief measures will undoubtedly serve, uh, as a lifeline for Lakewood residents, provides them with essential support to securing stable housing. Um, and to close, we extend our heartfelt gratitude to the unwavering commitment to the well-being of families and individuals um, that rely on these vital services. So on behalf of the consortium, I want to convey our deep appreciation for the valuable work that you're doing to address affordable housing. Um, yeah, your dedication is making a tangible difference in the living, you know, this, uh, living situations of so many. So we stand firmly behind you in your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. James Dunlop is next.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is, uh, James Dunlop, and I'm a Lakewood resident. Um, I really want to start off by reiterating what I said, uh, two weeks ago about Edgewater Park and, um, the view on the, the city's apparent view on, on the boating dock. And as I understand it, there's some view that it needs to be expanded, and I, I really, um, don't understand why it's necessary to expand the boating dock. Um, as I suggested, um, there is with the equity, with the, with the issue of equity in terms of making, uh, making the Edgewater Park available for everyone. Now, that doesn't mean making it available for, you know, expanding facilities for huge boats, which are really not appropriate um, for, uh, Lake Stillicum. Um, having, um, a moratorium on the use of public docking facilities for, um, crafts, say, above a certain size or being motorized would certainly make, um, would make a lot of sense. Um, but I'm just wondering, where is the impetus to expand, um, Lakewood, um, Edgewater Park? Where is it actually, um, actually coming from? Um, you know, you could solve a lot of the traffic problems by simply making it not available to large craft, crafts with an engine or whatever, because, you know, I've seen, you know, people use the boating dock with their huge boats for stench of gasoline. Um, that's just going to get even worse if you, um, um, if you expand the facilities. So I'm just, I'm just really, I'm just really curious as to, as to why, you know, from an equity, from a perspective of equity, you do not, that's, you don't need to um, facilitate, uh, huge boats in that area. And I'm just wondering if it's just, is, has money become available to, to, uh, develop the boating dock? Is it, is there a facade of equity? You know, someone is claiming it's by equity, when in fact, it's a really very small group of people relative to the size of Lakewood who actually need to, um, have, um, huge crafts. You know, I've seen people, you know, boats actually drop on the road, you know, just collapse on the road. You know, it's just, it's ridiculous. Um, and it's, it just strikes me, but maybe it's, it's just about a bureaucracy that's out of control, that the city is, it feels it just has to develop. Maybe money's become available. Just because money's available, doesn't mean you have to spend it. Um, you know, if, for example, the mayor was offered a half, uh, offered half a million dollars if he would agree to build a concrete giraffe on his roof, would he just, would he accept it just for the sake of it, because the money is available? Um, I don't think he would. So I think, um, to conclude, I think you need to question, what is the purpose of development? And that's my sort of broader question, because I don't think it necessarily benefits the people of Lakewood.
Next is Christina Manetti.
Hello, actually, I'm reading, uh, a comment on behalf of Judith Manetti. Um, uh, she writes, "I've lived in Lakewood, uh, 51 years. I've recently learned of the city plan to claim by eminent domain the property at 9132 Edward Drive Southwest. I strongly urge you to, to more carefully rethink this proposal. There are a number of problems. Although it may be now an unpopular concept, originally, the lake shore was closely developed for private residences. Each of the properties enjoys waterfrontage, which enables not only a view, water sport activities, and a peaceful environment. Although it may not be necessary, I do hasten to point out that for those privileges, the fortunate Lakewood residents pay a premium in elevated property taxes. Incidentally, you are certainly aware that the lake is indeed shallow. There are smelly algae, algae problems. On top of those conditions, the creation of an enhanced boat ramp access in parking facilities will substantially intensify boating activity, which will surely not be limited to rowboats for slow-going fishermen, but also provide an invitation to more power vessels. More boating leads to stirring up the lake water, resulting in water turbulence. The recreational benefits of the lake will be lost. The fishing prospects will be decreased, if not lost altogether. At this point, I feel the need to emphasize that there is no official monitor of people's behavior present on the water. With increased access, one may definitely anticipate, between homeowners and water sport enthusiasts, disagreeable situations leading to civil discord. The increase in numbers of people on the water will disrupt the ambiance and deny the ability of local residents to the peaceful enjoyment of their property. As I understand it, that may be one of the most basic precepts of modern law. No, my family and I do not have Lake Stillicum waterfront property, but I contend that wherever one lives, one of the greatest benefits offered by beautiful Lakewood is the experience of daily life in a quiet, pleasant suburban community. This is something that the council members must always remember. The significant cost of acquiring this private property, if the owner of the condemned parcel is compensated with fair market value, for the benefit of a small segment of the population, is money which could be spent in other ways to the betterment of the community as a whole. I encourage you to think while ahead, anticipate problems, and avoid them, rather than try to gain, regain control when unintended consequences develop in the aftermath of an ill-advised solution to a smaller problem. Thank you.
Next is Tishomer Dunlop.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, uh, I'd also like to make a comment about, uh, Edgewater Park and specifically the, uh, house near Edgewater Park that the city wants to end the domain to make a parking lot. Um, I just want to just say first off that Edgewater Park is, is very small. Um, if you've ever been there, it's like very narrow and, uh, uh, it, it's hardly a park. It's just a strip by the lake. And I think, um, uh, expanding the boat, boating dock is really not something that should be a priority. And, uh, the, like, building, like, besides all the problems of eminent domain, having a building, constructing a parking lot near Edgewater Park just doesn't make sense for the size it is. And seeing a single person's house potentially being eminent demained, um, really makes me lose a lot of the trust I have in the city. Uh, I feel like that, uh, if, if one, you know, has a house, if one lives in a city, one should trust that, uh, you know, people go on and on about, like, uh, property rights. But, and then, in contrast to that, the city wants to take away somebody's house to build a parking lot. So the question is, are, are property rights, uh, actually, you know, meaningful, supposed property rights, if the city can just go along and take away somebody's house? So I don't feel like it's a reasonable thing to take away this person's house. I, I don't know. But, uh, even if it was reasonable, I don't think that, um, I don't think that Edgewater Park needs a parking lot. And there are all the problems associated with having a parking, parking lot. You're going to have more, more runoff. It's going to be, you know, you're going to have more traffic going to the lake potentially. Uh, it's going to, it's just not good. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say. It's not a good idea. Thank you.
Next is Kim Underwood.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, uh, honorable, uh, council members. I appreciate the time to comment. I have two brief comments to say. Uh, one, I'd like to first compliment Judith, I think her name was Judith Manetti, on her, um, on her concerns regarding the, uh, 9132 Edgewater Drive. Um, we do pay, I live in Lakewood, have for 45 years, we do pay elevated taxes for waterfront, and, you know, that's a privilege. Um, it's earned. We, we don't just, I mean, that's what parks are for, yes. Um, but in, in regards to that acquisition of 9132, um, you, our mayor, has stated that all, quoting the remaining 60% of Lakewood residents should have access to all Lakewood parks and, and lakes for recreation. But does that include Gravely Lake? It seems that we have a little bit of a double standard here, because as a matter of fact, to date, there are only two public access points on Gravely Lake, both of which are completely grown over with blackberry bushes. People have been run off and instructed to remove themselves from attempting to enjoy the water there. So my question is, shouldn't 100% of Lakewood residents have access to 100% of Lakewood's lakes? Can you justify forcibly removing an honorable, tax-paying family from their home of 15 years to provide additional parking when Lakewood residents cannot currently enjoy all of the lakes in Lakewood? The second issue that I would like to comment on is the interlock in the states. I oppose this preliminary plat number 3755 as written. Due to the significant tree removal, as well as its proximity to Laurel Pond and Lost Lake, there will undoubtedly be adverse environmental effects. So due to this sensitive nature of this site, an MDS at least should be required, um, but technically, an EIS should be required. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last individual that I see with a hand up to address the council virtually during the public comment period. I'll leave it open for a second here to see if we've missed anyone. Madam Clerk, virtually. We'll get those of you in person in just a minute. Anyone else with a virtual hand up?
Uh, Mayor, there are no virtual hands raised at this time.
Great. So I'll turn to those who have first signed in at the sign-in sheet, and then if you haven't signed in, certainly you're welcome to address uh, council during the public comment period. So the first is Tom Falk.
Uh, my name is Tom Falk. I live on Lake Stillicum. And my concern is the parking lot that you're considering, uh, through eminent domain. Uh, I'm of the understanding that part of my property taxes pay for the maintenance of Lake Stillicum. And we open a parking lot, are they going to help support that? Do my taxes go down? Because we now have the ability to have additional people there. Another concern is, uh, a parking lot. Uh, how many vehicles are going to leak oil, leak gas, uh, contaminate the water? Another concern that I have is, who monitors this? Uh, are the boats going to be licensed? We've seen boats on the lake that are not. Um, I think this is a wrong thing to do. We pay for access to this lake by living on it. I realize that it's a public lake, but if I'm paying for it, then why, if you're going to do this, don't we have other people sharing in the cost of that? Are you going to charge a parking fee? Who's going to monitor it? Those are my concerns. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Tamara Cook.
Hi, everybody. My name is Tamara Cook. I live in Lakewood. I'd like to talk about, um, a lot of things. I'm going to stick to marginalized people right now. Um, first of all, I want to talk about the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, the, the flag is a symbol, and symbols can be changed and thought of in many different ways, depending upon the person and depending upon uh, society and the way it's going. Could be an individual thing. I would really like to see my government and the board, if you're going to pledge to something, pledge to the people of Lakewood, Lakewood, Washington, within the United States of America. That's never going to change. That says that you're here for us, okay? This is that you're not here for a symbol, a symbol that can be misconstrued, like what the good old boys think of the rebel flag now. A symbol, a flag is a symbol, and it's, it's, it's a, it means a lot of things to a lot of different people. But the United, the, the English language has changed throughout time so that words have mean something totally different than what it meant 100 years ago to my great-grandmother's time. So I'm asking you to define the meaning of what you're pledging to when you're up here pledging. And if it is to the people of the United States, maybe we need something different. You know, um, that's just one thing. The other thing is, I just want to remind people that marginalized people don't have to be black or white or a color or race or a, or a, uh, different language. Marginalized people can just be on the phrase of society for any reason. My big grief right now is because I'm not going to agree to the electronic, checking the box of, box of agreement of electronic devices that I can't understand the language to. And actually, I can decide the, I can define it, but I won't sign it. So now I'm marginalized from understanding where I can go on a bus. There's not a bus book anymore. I can't go into a grocery store and, and, and get all the good boys, because I'm one of the people that read the agreements that says you have to go to www dot every so often and reread your agreement, because it's going to change. Okay? So I'm one of those marginalized people, and you don't have to be, you, I'm, I'm going to call it, I'm prejudiced. I'm being prejudiced against, because I'm going against a system that I do not believe in, and I think infringes upon the United States' rights. We need to, we need to go back. During COVID, I did not have no government, because you did everything on, 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 uh, I don't know, Skype or whatever you use now. Um, I want, I think the N U S R needs to have, uh, some better agreements of how we're going to use this, this information. I want to see that we're going to start having, uh, licensing and, uh, oh, I want you to just tell, any of you, look at your phones right now and say, who's my administrator? We ought to know these things, and we ought to know what their business is and how they're handling us.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
All right. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Didn't hear the, the buzzer go off, so I'm sorry about that. Make sure it clicks next time. Next is Abraham Mirjelini. Again, sir, remind you the same comment the last time.
Uh, well, continuation of that. Uh, hello, everyone. Thank you for, uh,
Again, just, you got to state your name and residence for the record.
Pardon me? I hope you would, you are listening and you have listened to those, uh,
We, we still need to have your name. You, you say it formally for the record. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, I'm Abraham Mirjelini. I am a resident of
Thank you.
9132 Edgewater Drive Southwest in Lakewood, Washington. Thank you. Um, I'm not here to talk about, uh, your decision for condemning my house uh, because you banned me already against my First Amendment right. So, uh, but I'm here to thank all of those who are here in our, they have spoken in our support in the past, and they will be in the future. Uh, regardless, um, I believe that, uh, no tomorrow is as beautiful as today. Uh, hopefully it is. Uh, speaking of that, I am, I am, you already know that I'm a Muslim, Iranian, American. Well, uh, in order not to add to your Well, uh, in order not to add to your grief, I'm going to just play, uh, music from Iran and just leave this session. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last individual who has signed in, uh, to speak tonight, but again, that doesn't preclude anyone who's here from doing so. So you'd like to address councillor in the public comment period, step on up to the podium there and again, state your name and residence of record and you will have your three minutes to address the council on city related matters.
Good afternoon or good evening, council. I, I'm Daniel Dobler. I live at seventy-one West Shore Ave, Southwest. Uh, my neighbor was so good as to remind me about the meeting tonight. I got here a couple of minutes late. Having said that, the first problem on the way over here is all these guys on the bridge fishing. I just about had my windshield knocked out with a big weight by the guy cask now on the road. And they're on both sides of the, the bridge. So something's got to be done about that because little kids, the garbage and the mess they leave, it's it's, it isn't a safe, it's not safe and it shouldn't be, uh, uh, an issue for us when we're trying to go across a bridge. There's just too many people out there. They park all over in the, in the street. It's just a a shambles of garbage everywhere. So my next deal is having great neighbors and, and we appreciate the lake. We've been there for five years. Who's going to monitor all this additional boating? We got, we, I had a guy on the dock one day. He's on my dock because he got boat problems and he's smoking cigarettes and flicking the butts in the lake. My wife went ballistic because she doesn't like, she don't even let me smoke on the property. So I'm just saying to you, who's going to handle all this garbage and mess? And there isn't, I mean, I think in the five years I've been there, I've seen two cops on the lake on jet skis. That's it. And, uh, we're paying premiums to live there. I've seen my taxes go up every year and you know, the part of the, the, the reason for us moving to the lake was we enjoyed the privacy. If you're going to build a, uh, a bigger parking lot and, and enhance boat ramp, that's a very shallow area. I mean, there's an area, uh, there's a time of the year you can't even get your, your boat out of there because it's so shallow. So anyway, uh, I guess you can understand that I'm against it. With having said that, I mean, he's just here to support the people on the lake. And we're all paying a higher property taxes every year and we just, I don't see who's going to handle this mess with the garbage, with the, the oil and gas leaks. And so I think you really need to readdress this, have a second thought. Another thing is people living on American lake with the big parks. They have a lot of stuff stolen. You can't just leave stuff at the, at the, down on your, on your dock or the boat, uh, your bulkhead area. Because there's all these people from outside that don't live on the lakes that don't respect the neighbors on the lake and they steal from members of the lake. So that's another issue. Now we're going to have a security problem. So anyway, that's all I got. Thanks, folks.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the councillor in the public comment period who has yet to do so? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Jasmine Smith and I've been living in the Lakewood area for over fifty-five years. And, um, I'm here to support Dr. Mirjelili, um, and his home on Lake Stilicum. And, uh, I just think it's wrong to take someone's home. It's just not a house. It's a home. He's been here for over fifteen, seventeen years. Um, he doesn't owe any money on it. He pays his taxes and it's, um, inhumane, I think. And where's your human side of leadership? In our beautiful Lakewood and, uh, representing your constituents and not taking their home for a parking lot. Putting more concrete and I know I've talked to you before about pavement, concrete. I said, the world is on fire. I just said that the last, uh, city council meeting and then you know Hawaii, look at what happened to Hawaii. And then look at our beautiful gem. Fort Stilicum, you know, if we um, put more money into water, maybe we could water our parks with the trees and the grass and, uh, respecting our wildlife. Because we are Lakewood, as I said, we have the beautiful lakes and we have the beautiful woods, the beautiful trees. Please do not cut down any more trees. Uh, we need it for canopy. We need it for oxygen. We need it for our wildlife. Um, so I'm just looking at the human side of our city. Um, and it's been beautiful and I think just building more uh, parking lots, building more, uh, warehouses, um, zoning for new homes. I, I, I think that, uh, what is it by, uh, the Lutheran church? More homes, more homes. Do we have affordable housing? Or is our taxes going to go up higher for the seven hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand dollar homes? Um, and I just really think that it would be more respectful if you would think about the people who've been here who have a home and have fair, at least fair market price. I was told that you want to give them two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a house on a lake. Where in the world can you buy a home for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, let alone a house on the lake, a home on the lake? Just something for you to think about. I mean, even Matthew, the tax collector, I don't think was taking people's
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Any others who wish to address the councillor in public comment that are here? Yes, sir.
How you doing, General Ovino X, Black Panther Party? Thought I wouldn't have to look at y'all faces no more. But I'm here to speak for the gentleman that lives on the lake. Beautiful home, beautiful area, but of course you want to give him a pittance of what the value would be worth. And then on top of that, take a man out of his home. As she said, it's not a house, it's a home. Been there long enough, they, y'all were probably not even in office when this man attained his home. Uh, you want to tear it down to put more concrete up, just like you want to tear down a whole bunch of other areas of the city and build a nice big warehouses. All you worried about is fattening up your pockets. Harem on you, your ancestors, your ancestors, ancestors. It's horrible. It's ugly. It's atrocious. I don't know why y'all do this to your people to live here. They pay your taxes. They pay for you to live comfortably. Why ain't you tearing down your homes? I'll wait. Oh, nobody has an answer for that. All right. Well, keep on fattening up them pockets. That is absolutely atrocious. And you as mayor, behind that pretty little fence. Hmm, you got a nice home too. Ain't nobody asking you to tear yours down. No? You? No? No, nobody. None of you are being asked to tear your homes down, but you telling this man that he has to get out of his home and leave and take this pittance of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Where in America can you buy a home for so cheap? You know? I had a lot more prepared, but I'm so angry with y'all. I can't even speak. All power to the people.
That's the last individual so far, uh, that has risen to address councillor in public comment. Again, if you'd like to do it, you're welcome to do it. And if not, I'm going to declare the public comment period closed. Oh, go ahead. Come on, come on up.
My name is Diane Bommel. I know you. I know you. I know you. And I've been on the lake since nineteen ninety-six and I've seen y'all switch your agenda. Especially you, Ms. Mary. When I first saw you, you wouldn't even let us treat our lake. We had to, because you wanted the feds, because the feds said we couldn't do it.
You got to address the councilman. Yeah.
Okay. I'll adjust you, Mr. Jason.
How about the whole council, but?
The whole council. I know that that park over there, Edgewater, was cleaned up by a church youth group. That's your responsibility. I just walked down there today. Atrocious. And you want to take someone's beautiful home away to put more blacktop and concrete, which is everything that's against the fish and wildlife people. You have beer bottles and junk floating in the lake, which is totally against what y'all are preaching. And you're going to do this? And you know what? You have room on your side in the park. If you would fill it in and take that stupid barricade down and you can make parallel parking on your side and, and address more people. But oh, that's too simple. That's just too simple, isn't it? And we've got people skiing on the lake after dark, people pulling little kids on inner tubes after dark. And we don't have a police presence on our lake and we are paying top dollar to live there. For what? For what? I ask you, for what? That you're not, now you're not protecting the fish. You're not protecting anything. You're protecting your agenda. And I asked you last time, why don't you take care of what you have instead of plowing through and putting more parking lot and blacktop and everything else? That's all I have to say, but I'm thoroughly, thoroughly, thoroughly disgusted with you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Feel free. And then I have a few comments I'd like, it's not typical that I do this, but I want to address all of you at the end of this.
My name's Sue Ellen Foss and I live in Lakewood and I am a Lake resident. I just found out about, through the grapevine about what's going on. I don't know anything other than hearsay. I do, my concern is that I think everyone has presented all of our concerns very well up to this point. My question to the council is, how does this taking over of a property on the waterfront and turning it into a parking lot, how do, how are you allowed to do that? Because I thought the State Shoreline Act does not allow any addition of impermeable surfaces within fifty feet of the shoreline. Now I've just gone through this because I wanted to expand my depth a little bit. So I have the paperwork at home that I could certainly bring by to you, but I'm sure you have access to that. But it states quite clearly that the Shoreline Act does not allow any additional hardscape put within fifty feet of the shoreline. How does this fit into your plans? Are you guys not allowed to answer questions? Okay. Okay, then that's, that's all I have to say. I just, that was one thing had not been brought up yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I speak, any others that would like to address the councillor in the public comment period? Just want to make sure we, we've covered everyone. If not, I'll declare the public, oh. Okay, Cindy, come on up. And if there are anyone else that would like to get up, please queue up so we can kind of keep the meeting flowing.
Ms. Cindy By, Lakewood resident, Lakewood, Stilicum resident for thirty years and, and everybody has spoken eloquently. And the idea, I'm just going to second it briefly, the idea that you're considering taking this man's home. And it also occurred to me before the lady spoke too about, don't I have to get an environmental impact statement for anything I want to do to my property with fifty feet? And I know darn well they're not going to let me, you know, pave it over. Um, but my other concern is you're trying to make it more accessible to bring more people onto the lake when the people, it's at capacity anyway. As we all know, it's a free for all on hot summer days. It's not safe. We have no police presence. We cannot handle the traffic that's on the lake to begin with. And yet you want to make it more, expand it more to allow more people onto the lake. And that's going to be a disaster. There's going to be people get hurt. There's going to be again, more trash. And again, I don't know if the general public is aware. Excuse me, but the homeowners foot the bill for one hundred percent of the lake maintenance. It's not taxpayers. It's the homeowners. Now you're going to bring more people onto the lake, which means our cleanup is going to be significantly more. Where's our compensation? Where's the discussion on that? You know, I don't, I'm just going to end it there because I don't understand the logic of any of it. So, thank you.
Sir, you've already had your chance. Okay, we, we don't do back and forth during public comment. I appreciate it. So I have already, uh, commented, excuse me, I've already allowed folks, uh, to address the council. Virtually I closed the virtual public comment down. I'm not going to reopen it. Uh, we've allowed everyone here to have their chances. So I'm going to declare the public comment period closed. But what I would like to say is a couple of things. I think it's challenging, uh, and first of all, we can't speak directly on items that are involved in pending litigation. And this matter, as most of you may or may not know, uh, is a matter, uh, involved in pending litigation. But what I can say is that all of our parks, including Edgewater Park, are part of the park's legacy planning process that is, uh, promulgated through citizen involvement through the Parks Recreation Advisory Board. Those folks bring together the comments of the public and they make recommendations for changes or updates or long-term planning for all of the parks in Lakewood, including Edgewater Park. Edgewater Park is part of the legacy planning process and has been for some time. Now, in terms of, again, I'm not going to comment on matters pertaining to litigation, but I would encourage all of you, as the last commenter indicated, not to rely on hearsay or that which you don't know. Uh, it, it's very difficult for us to address because it's involved in pending litigation, but I can tell you no decisions have been made about anything with regard to this, this property. What you probably don't know, which is part of, uh, the public litigation process, is part of this property is within the right of way. That's what promulgated this whole discussion. That is something that the public, maybe those of you sitting here don't know. And so clearing title is a legal process that involves on occasion these kinds of actions. It doesn't necessarily lead to the paving or the asphalting of a parking lot. I don't know where all of this is coming from because no decisions have been made. So all I can tell you is thank you for the comments. And for those of you who do know me, Diane and Cindy and those of you, I live on that lake. I pay the taxes on that lake. I have had my paddleboard stolen off of my dock on that lake. But I still believe in providing access to people who aren't as fortunate as I am and as you are and as you are and as you are to live on the lake. It is public access and by state law, we have to provide public access to people. Does it have to be perfect access? No. Does it have to be access that provides for fifty-foot yachts to access? No, of course not. But we have to provide reasonable access to folks because state law requires us to do so and we're doing the best we can with the recommendations that have been provided to us by with the recommendations that have been provided to us by other citizens who have sat on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, who said, we should do some work to make this park better. Your comments are well taken. When you talk about, you gotta maintain that which you have, and we should have better police presence to decrease knucklehead activity. Agreed. And to the extent, uh, that that isn't happening, those are things, yes, we need to address, and I appreciate the comments because I too live on the lake. I too suffer the same sort of issues that many of you who live on the lake do. But I still believe that people deserve access to the waters in Lakewood. We have to maintain it? Yes. We have to police it? Yes. It's gotta be appropriate? Yes. Are you going to be involved in that process with further tweaks or updates to the legacy plan as it pertains to Edgewater Park? I hope so. And we're gonna work to do that. But I just want you to know, please, uh, don't, don't fly with rumor and innuendo. Because those of us, we don't know it all. But I can tell you, we have more knowledge about what's going on than many people, and that's just because of the litigation process. I'm sorry that that's the way it is. But I'd ask that you trust a little bit in the process. That's all. Because we're all neighbors. We're trying to do the right thing. So I do appreciate you coming tonight. Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Uh, just a quick update on, as part of your September eighteenth meeting, it is likely that the council will be either, it will be considering and possibly giving direction to, um, pick up the update to the Edgewater Master Plan, which was actually initiated back in two thousand eighteen and nineteen. And as a part of that proposal that the council will be considering will be significant community involvement that would kick off in the October, November, December, January timeframe. And Mayor, as you pointed out, this would also be facilitated through P RAB, your Parks Recreation Advisory Board, who would then, after going through that process, which would include, again, community input and feedback, would then make a recommendation, probably sometime in the early part, early to mid-part of two thousand twenty-four regarding the future of Edgewater Park. So, um, that is coming up shortly, Mayor.
So in other words, you're telling us it's not a done deal? No fait accompli on the design?
I, I have never heard of such a thing, Mayor.
Right. So last comment, those of you who do have boats on Lake Stillicum and see the water level coming down, it is hard to get a boat out of Edgewater without hitting your axle or whatever else. So there are things as part of this process that folks are gonna look at, and you all will have some input on that, whether we need to remove some of the gravel by the, the, the concrete boat ramp, whether we need to try to work on removing some logs so that it's safer to get boats in and out, all those kinds of things. So more to follow. Thank you for coming. Uh, but please, uh, don't be driven by innuendo and rumor. That doesn't work for anyone. Okay? Sir, I, I appreciate it. We can't, we're, we're done, and I had, because I get to be the chair, I get to have the last word on it, but thank you. Okay, we're now turning to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of August seventh, twenty twenty-three. B, motion number twenty twenty-three dash seventy-seven, authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Washington State Healthcare Authority for Lakewood's Choice. C, motion number twenty twenty-three dash seventy-eight, authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Tacoma Pierce County Habitat for Humanity in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars for the American Lake Townhomes Sewer Extension Project. D, motion number twenty twenty-three dash seventy-nine, reappointing James Harrison to serve on the Public Safety Advisory Committee through August sixth, twenty twenty-six. E, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Arts Commission meeting minutes of May eighth, twenty twenty-three. Two, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of June first, twenty twenty-three. And three, Arts Commission meeting minutes of June fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there any item which any member of council wishes to remove from the consent agenda consideration at this time? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss and by Councilmember Laura Sella that we adopt a consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now move to the regular agenda resolutions. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, approving funding allocation of one million in home funds and one point one seven five million in home A R P in support of Living Support Access Alliance, LASSA, Gravely Lake Commons twenty-five unit affordable housing project.
Very good. And for this, I'll call on Mr. Gumm, our Housing Program Manager, to provide an overview before we have council adoption and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Um, as the clerk mentioned, that's a resolution to support LASSA with one million dollars in home funds and one point one seven five million in home A R P funds. Um, the funding will be used to develop twenty-five units of affordable housing. The project has, um, other funding in it through Pierce County, potentially state and federal funds. The, um, I believe this was reviewed on August fourteenth. Um, that was the second or third time that we've done a review of this project, so there's been a fairly substantial review. Two questions that were asked at the August fourteenth, uh, meeting of, of council. One was by Councilmember Anderson, wanted to know how many, um, how many, why is my brain not functioning tonight? How many, um, section eight vouchers, sorry, were in the project? Um, there are two vouchers in the project. I did have a long conversation with the Pierce County Housing Executive Director, Jim Stretts, last week. Um, he was unaware of any conversations about funding all of the units. So, um, I believe I mentioned that was the original conversation and, and he was not able to confirm that. So that information was provided to me incorrectly, but there are two units that he did confirm that they will fund. There's only two that would potentially have a hole in the, in the rental allocation. So the home A R P limits the maximum amount of rent that can be, um, provided by a renter thirty percent of their maximum income, no matter how much the rent is. So there's, there's typically a little hole that's typically needing to be filled, and he has said those, those can be met with his vouchers through Pierce County Housing Authority. Um, all other units would be just standard low-income rent. Typically, they're set at what's called the high home rent. So HUD does a review of, of rents and figures out what the maximum income for, for a household is based on sixty-five percent of the area median incomes, then fair market rents and so forth. So the other rents would be based on those. Um, there's no need for vouchers in those at this time. The other question that was asked, um, I believe was what sort of language could be put into the agreement, um, to make sure that one, the project doesn't lag, and if it does, then the city has an option to, to move forward and allocate those funds. As ARP is kind of a timely funding allocation process, there's a, a little bit shorter of a window to get the ARP funds moved. Pierce County does have A R P funds and City of Lakewood would have A R P funds, and those are kind of the things to be aware of. So we looked at the city's allocation language for the one million in A R P funds, and the one million in A R P funds were allocated conditionally based on the funding package being completed by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. So that would be staff's recommendation to move forward with that conditional award language as well. With that, does council have any questions?
Well, I do. Is the conditional language in the proposed ordinance? Because I'm not sure I see it.
It is not in the, in the proposed ordinance. It would have to be added.
Okay. Um, I would suggest we add it before it comes back for consideration, unless we have it here for us tonight. Yeah, where, where should this go, Mr. Gumm? Which section? I would assume it would be section three, and current section three would be section four. Maybe the city attorney can give us a sense of what language we might inject there, you know, by amending the proposed ordinance before us. We're talking conditional language to make sure that if it's not timely, uh, spent or obligated within X months of a trigger date, that the, uh, allocation would not go forward.
I, I think what I would build in is simply a line that says that funding is contingent on, um, being expended by X date and otherwise shall revert back to the general fund or wherever you wanted to revert to.
Um, I'm fine with that. We just need, it would be good to have it in here.
Right. That's what I'm saying. You move to amend to include that.
And what would be the X date so that we have enough reaction time? Because we don't want to get to the very end of twenty twenty-six. Uh, you know, and then be, be set with limited choices to do what needs to be done to benefit the public, right? So what would be the triggering sort of timeframe from your expertise and recommendation?
So the, i- if there was a trigger date for December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three for this funding to be allocated, that's a, I think that's a reasonable date. Um, the, the one piece of the puzzle that's kind of hard to track is the federal funding, because I, I wish the federal funding was as consistent as it, it had been in years past, but that's something that's lagging. So if Fed funds do last or lag, um, potentially, it could be an issue come before council and, and modify that date if, if council so chose or stay with the December thirty-first deadline, uh, and move those funds. The commitment for Pierce County Housing Authority, or sorry, for Pierce County to move their funds would be June of this coming year. They said, I, I talked to the program manager and he said no later than the middle of June. Realistically, by the end of June, they need to have those funds kind of moved somewhere else. So if, if there was a, another date, the, the second date I would recommend would be June first of, of twenty twenty-four.
Okay. So first I'll ask if there are any questions, Mr. Gumm. Next, procedurally, folks, I'll need to get a motion to put this uh, for discussion. Then if there's an indication or willingness to amend it based on what we're chatting about right now, then we can amend the motion, but I don't have a motion on the table yet. Mr. Boki.
Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow up on what you said. You said December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So you're giving them less than four months. You're giving them four months. Is that?
It, it would be consistent with the ARPA funding that's in the project as well. That's, that was the only reason that I was suggesting December thirty-first.
Okay, the, the ARPA funding has to be done legally by the end December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So you, you're saying a year earlier?
I believe. Was it, am I, am I misquoting the date? Tiffany, I don't believe I am.
Good evening, Tiffany Spear, ARPA Program Manager. Um, when the council adopted a motion last year approving ARPA funds that were coming to City of Lakewood and then funneled on as a subrecipient to LASSA, which is a different bucket than what Mr. Gumm is talking about, that motion does say, um, full, uh, funding for the project by the end of twenty twenty-three. That's the motion. ARPA in and of itself says by the end of twenty-four, things have to be obligated, and then by twenty twenty-six, things have to be expended.
Okay, that's really good, Gumm. Okay.
Any further questions, Mr. Gumm? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gumm, I'm, I have to admit that this resolution is confusing. Okay, to be able to go and do that. So when the city received an allocation of ARPA funds and we went through a process and we funded a, a variety of things. And that included conditionally contributing one million dollars to this project. Um, that at that time, we sort of edged up to it because we said we got a million, but we wanna, we're not gonna write the check yet because we wanted to, to, to do some, some things and see how things were going. But there was a million dollars in ARPA funding that was to go to LASSA to help finance this phase three project. This resolution talks about a million dollars in home funding. That's a different million dollars?
Yes, there's two different fund sources, home and home A R P.
No, I'm, it, see, I'm thinking there's three. There's ARPA dollars. Then this resolution is saying we're gonna do a million dollars in home funding and a million plus in home A R P funding. So is this putting the city's contribution potentially to this project at three point one something million?
Correct.
So, given the estimated cost of the project, we would be funding a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per unit for the project if it stays on budget.
Roughly, that sounds correct.
So in your, in your staff summary, you talked about alternatives. And the alternative talked about amending the, either the five-year or one-year C, C D B G home plan? What would that mean?
I'm, I'm, I'm not, on which page of the agenda? I, I do not recall an option for amending the plan. There's, there's a, there's an amendment that's required of the plan if funds are to change from this project to something else. So let's say this project were not to go forward, and then once, once, whatever deadline council chooses, that it, it's not funded, it were to go forward. Then there's an amendment of the annual action plan that would be required to reallocate the funds. Um, if, if this project moves forward, then there is no reallocation of funds. There's no re-amendment, um, to any of the plans. So it's, it's kind of a convoluted process, but I hope that explains it.
Okay, but in the staff study, it says alternatives, the council may modify the joint consolidated annual action plan funding allocations and projects. Does that mean that this is in that plan? Or that we have to make a modification in order to put it in the plan?
So the, the way that the funding works is there's, there's, it's a two-part process. There's a five-year consolidated plan. The five-year consolidated plan sets up a five-year plan for the City of Lakewood to develop affordable housing or public access to parks or whatever we're spending our funds on. So the five-year plan has determined that. This fits under the affordable housing component. Um, there's a, a component with home funds that have been allocated to the Affordable Housing Fund. These funds would come from that. Each and every year that we allocate funds, um, as part of the annual action plan, we, we work under that umbrella of the five-year plan and allocate funds accordingly in the, in that five-year, or in that five-year cycle each year. This would have been allocated as part of the last year's, actually, the last four years' plans and the Affordable Housing Fund for Home. So we would be using home funds that have been set aside to develop affordable housing. There would be no need to change or amend the plan. The home A R P was a special allocation that was, was awarded to the City of Lakewood, um, last year, about a year and a half ago, actually. Those funds, being home funds, go through the City of Tacoma as lead agency. So the City of Tacoma as lead agent developed a plan to use those funds with input based on, on council and staff and, and what we recommended them to do. Um, so that part of the plan was allocated to, again, affordable housing for the home A R P and potentially a use for tenant-based rental assistance, depending on how the funds were used. We, we left ourselves, uh, a window of, of a couple of opportunities to use them in case one didn't work. So if this project moves forward, it does not need a, an amendment to the, either the annual action plan or the, or the five-year plan. If another project were chosen that was not affordable housing or, or some of the other options, tenant-based rental assistance that were provided in those plans, then yes, we would have to potentially amend the five-year plan and the annual action plan. So typically, they're, the whole, the whole point of the plans is kind of leave them as, as kind of a, a large umbrella that kind of encompasses lots of different options, and that's, that's what we're working under with this project.
Let me, just so that my math is right, where, that, that we're saying that if we were to approve this resolution, it would bring the project to slightly over seven million dollars of funds committed, of which over three million would be coming from the City of Lakewood's various fund allocations, uh, ARPA, home and, and home A R P. Is it possible to approve only the home A R P allocation and, 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 and not the home funds at this time? Um, what, you know, I guess that I am leery about going from a commitment of forty thousand dollars per unit, which is what our million dollars of ARPA funds was for, and going from forty to a hundred and twenty For and going from forty to a hundred and twenty plus. When using funds that could also be used for other needs in the city related to. Housing. You know, it is like, so I guess I'm, I'm, I'm wondering, could these two allocations in this resolution? Is it possible to approve one of them?
I will, I'll defer to council, but I will, I will. Have the city attorney probably answer. I'll give you, my, my quick take would be yes. If council chose to do that, you would have to have a resolution to do so. And am I correct, city attorney?
Yes.
Okay, so. You know, Lhasa is, we, we are, we are down the road in this. We, you know, we we invested money in phases one, phases two. We have. Real estate transactions assistance invested in this phase three project and going forward. And there is definitely advantage to the city to gaining. Twenty five units of affordable housing. And I am encouraged by the fact that. It is apparently going to be affordable housing that will. Identify renters, the renters. Through a, through a, through a process that doesn't include all of the. Things that go with a housing first model to be able to go and do that. But let me just ask you so that I understand. When. Let's say we have a person who's at fifty percent of AMI and they want to rent. One of the apartments and they will be going through and vetted by Lhasa through some. Procedures that are consistent with the county's. Plan to end homelessness, to be able to go and do that. And then, and then there is some formula that based on their income would determine how much rent they would be expected to pay. And that supplementing that, Lhasa would. Have vouchers that would. Make the person eligible through the Pierce County Housing Authority or someone else. So what does that voucher actually do in terms of? Helping Lhasa? Does, does it, that voucher pay the difference between? What the renter can afford and is going to pay and the market rate? For what that unit would otherwise rent for?
That's exactly what it pays. The difference between what they can afford, their maximum contribution. And what the the rent is determined by HUD to be the the maximum rent that somebody can charge. So that difference is made up by the voucher.
Okay, so is the maximum rent that HUD determines to be charged? The same as the market rate for similar apartments in the community or is it less?
It's lower.
It's lower. So Lhasa wouldn't be. But the, but the, the income from those two sources is something that Lhasa could use if they. To finish off this project needed some debt service because they had to borrow the money instead of being granted it.
Yes.
To finish off the last three million.
Yes, any cash flow could be used for debt service.
And so in the, in the proposed language, just to go back to the mayor's thought about it, I think. The, the idea of. Letting, waiting until December thirty first of twenty twenty four to see whether they put together a complete. Package. For the sum of this money doesn't allow us to, and for our first million. Doesn't allow us the time to allocate it to something else if we. Wait until that day, but if we were moved it ninety days earlier. And they, and they didn't do it, we would then be able to make other useful use of. Of those dollars or would be able to have a process to decide how to do that. Is that? Sound right to you or? Do you envision that our home dollars able not strictly tied to that? Like ARPA dollars are to, to the December thirty first of twenty twenty four?
Well, it's, both of them will have a, a different timeline. So the the home ARP dollars have a shorter timeline than the home dollars. So home dollars have a two year commitment requirement and a four year expenditure timeline. With the potential of getting a one year extension from HUD. So realistically, you could do a a five year timeline for for home dollars to spend them. The home ARP have the, the deadlines that are what they are. There's the, the two thousand and twenty four. Deadline to commit funds and then there's a two thousand and twenty six deadline to expend the funds. So they're a little shorter than the home funds.
So, so is that because the five year plan ends at a certain time?
The five year plan actually, we're, we're in year four of it right now. So this coming year, we'll be doing the, the last year and and moving forward on developing the next plan. So it's twenty twenty to twenty four is the current five year plan. The next one starts in twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine.
So if we were going to. If we approve the resolution here for the the home funds particularly. That, but there, but it's really not looking at and actually being expended until. Twenty twenty six or something like that. They would just be rolled forward into the next five year plan?
Yes.
Is that it, Mr. Branstad?
That, I think that's all that I, that I have. I, I, this is, it's, it's just. It's just complicated and and but I'm, because it. But I guess I understand now that that we're going from one to three million, not going to two point one million.
Any other questions of Mr. Gum before I ask for a motion? Seeing no further questions, do I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty three dash zero eight? Suspense is killing me. It's been moved by Councilmember Laura Sella. Seconded by Councilmember Bokey that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty three dash zero eight. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Bokey.
I'm gonna try my hand at an amendment, a new section three and making the current section three into section four. And the language. Would be. Project is to be fully funded or the contract will be terminated by the city council. If all fund and all funding will be returned to the city for reallocation. If the award and contract documents are not complete by December thirty first, twenty twenty three, something along that line.
That's an awfully tight timeline.
I, I know, but that's what he's, he wanted. Staff is recommending twenty twenty three. I just don't see that's a realistic timeline.
That was, that was a recommendation of staff based on the ARP timelines. As I mentioned to council, another realistic timeline could be June first of twenty twenty four.
What's the counties, what's the counties?
That is the county's timeline, realistically, June first of twenty.
That's their three and a half million ARPA?
Yes.
That's the one I would do. So to repeat. Your proposed amendment, as I understand it, it is to. Uh, amend section three of proposed Resolution twenty twenty three dash zero eight to read. Something as follows or similar, according to the city attorney's wordsmithing. That if the project is not.
Fully funded.
Fully funded. Uh, then the city, fully funded by June one, twenty twenty four. With confirmed funding or whatever you want to call it.
The contract will be terminated by the city and all funding will be returned to the city for reallocation.
Okay. Is that clear enough, Madam? City Attorney?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that is clear enough. And because of the type city, we are an optional code city. It doesn't have to be perfect. We can correct some words.
Right.
Thing afterwards.
If the existing section three becomes section four.
Correct.
Yes, understood.
So everyone understand the proposed amendment on the table before I ask for a second.
I have a question.
There's a question by Councilmember Laura Sella.
Just to be clear, we're talking if they don't get to that ten point five million level by June first.
Of twenty twenty four.
I just, I want to put dollars to it, so we're making sense of it. Okay. Thank you.
That's what I understand to be the proposed amendment. So I have a second to the proposed amendment. It's been seconded by Councilmember Bell. Any further discussion or need for clarification of the proposed amendment? Mr. Branstad?
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I'm concerned about the wording in the proposed amendment. That says fully funded. That's. Not precise. If we mean it's funded to a level of ten point five million. Then I think that I would prefer that the amendment say that. Or if we're okay, if it gets to ten million. Um, which actually I would be. Okay, if by that date they had ten million in funding, you know, I'd be. Be okay with that. And so, you know, I would. Move to amend the amendment. To replace fully funding with. At a level of ten million.
No less than?
Yeah.
At funding no less than ten million, for instance?
Would that be satisfactory? No, it's a ten million by the June date in twenty twenty four. That's. Doesn't allow for this. Wiggle room around, well, what's fully funded? That's, they, if they get to that point. You know. Because a ten point five is an estimate anyway.
There's always the concept of value engineering, perhaps. Okay, so there's a proposed amendment to the amendment. Which is to alter the language from the term fully funded to the term at a funding level no less than ten million. By six one, twenty twenty four. Is there a second to the proposed amendment to the amendment? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we amend the proposed amendment as indicated. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the amendment to the amendment signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That proposed amendment carries. Now we move to. Uh, the amendment to Resolution twenty twenty three dash oh eight as proposed. Any further discussion on the proposed amendment as amended? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amended amendment has been adopted. We now turn to Resolution twenty twenty three dash zero eight as amended. Any further discussion? The only point I make is I look forward to seeing the wordsmithing of our esteemed city attorney. At the end of the cycle here, Mr. Bokey.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I do want to comment because I am supportive of the project. And, but we have made a really significant for us. Investment in this project, right? I mean, we, we have. For a city our size now to put a hunk of our ARPA money, we helped them purchase the property. So that's not even included in this. I can't, I can't remember how much that was for, what we put in on that. We now have over three million dollars allocated to this. I, I really want to give them an opportunity at Lhasa. To get the rest of the financing together. I think it's going to be very difficult, actually, I think, given the tenor of the times, but. I'm wrong, I'm often wrong on this kind of stuff. So. So this is our good faith effort and and really now the ball is in Lhasa's court and we'll, we'll see what happens. We're very supportive of of their, of their operation here in Lakewood. And I'm hopeful, but. You know, it's June first means five months, next year, four months and nine months. And that's not a heck of a lot of time. So. In, in, in this kind of world where you have to try to braid. Different funding sources. So I wish, I wish them luck.
Mr. Branstad?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, I am, I, I'm supporting this resolution and making this additional allocations and. And. You know, significantly increasing our commitment to this, to this project. Uh, I would also say, though, that that I do it not. As a precedent. Or somebody else wants to have a project to think that we're going to fund over a hundred thousand dollars per unit. Our relationship with Lhasa over the first two phases of this project and this one is. Is one of that, you know, the, the big players in this affordable housing world, Mercy Housing and 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 some of those. Korean Women's Association have. Been conspicuously absent from being interested in projects in the City of Lakewood. Lhasa is a. Is our home person that is looking to do this. This is a project that is. By the scale of projects that are being done in Tacoma and Spedro Way and Bellevue in Seattle. Are, this, this is, this is a much smaller project to do that. So, you know, I, I would think that sometime in the future, when we look at. Being asked to help with projects of this sort. That we maybe need to, in our long term discussions, take a look at really. To, 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 to what? Amount per unit are we really willing to consider, seriously consider investing? Um, you know, we, we went into this without that a preconceived idea of that. And. You know, and, but I don't, but I think we're, we're. Dealing with Lhasa is, is, is different than if another outside entity comes and wants. To do something of saying, well, the, the city, the, the city has got a precedent. I don't want to say that with it. That we do for doing that, you know, historically, cities like Lakewood. Don't invest to this extent in these kinds of projects directly. That they do what we have done. They advocate with state and county and federal folks to do that. They contribute perhaps. Smaller amounts that we need to be looking at. At, if affordable housing is going to be something that is going on. And on the table for a long time and in Pierce County. And. We're the third largest entity in Pierce County after the county and the City of Tacoma. But each of those two entities have. One percent, a tenth of a cent percent sales tax and other. And 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 accesses to other revenue to to have much deeper pockets than us. You know, so for us to, to, to go to sort of say, we're going to fund. As we are in this, you know, in this project, when we count the real estate thing, a third. Of a project, just because it's in Lakewood. Uh, of a project, just because it's in Lakewood. Um, is maybe not the, the policy position we want to have and we should in the future need to have a policy thing. About future projects while remaining committed to this one.
Any further comments, Mr. Laura Sella?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh. In previous sessions, uh, Councilmember Anderson expressed. Concern that this equates to about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar per unit cost uh, for the entirety of the project. Uh, but. After talking to a few folks in our last session, uh, I adopted a, a different perspective in that. The benefit to the city of Lakewood and our residents uh, is twenty five units of housing. And the cost to the city of Lakewood and our residents is three million, which comes out to about a hundred and twenty seven thousand per unit. Uh, I feel like we're getting a good deal out of that. Um, and that's why I would be in support of this going forward.
Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. I too, uh, would like to echo what Councilmember Laura Sella mentioned. Uh, it does help us think about it in a different perspective, and I do like the fact that we are providing that to our Lakewood residents and also supporting. Lhasa, which is a Lakewood-based um, resource. So I am in support of this too. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just echo uh, some of the comments here. You know, we hear a lot. These days about the need for affordable housing and the housing shortages. At various income spectrums, uh, certainly at, at the spectrum that would be served by this particular project. We have had a longstanding partnership with Lhasa. Uh, we have committed uh, our goodwill, certainly our financial capital, but also our political capital. Uh, by supporting this project and having folks like me and the deputy mayor and others go down to. Not just Olympia, but back to Washington DC to advocate for this project. And if we don't put our own skin in the game, we have no business going to the state legislature or a federal delegation. Asking with our handout for money for this project. We are in this project because we are in this community. And. As Councilmember Laura Sella and Bell indicated, this is. A decent, not perfect, but a decent example of good leverage at work. We are investing along with Pierce County at three point five million. We are investing three million to get. Ten to ten point five million dollars of housing that we don't currently have. Uh, but for Lakewood and our investment in this project, the state would not have invested. And neither would the feds have invested and likely not Pierce County. So at some point you have to step up, and I think that we are stepping up in a major way, admittedly. Uh, with the public's funds and as good stewards of the public funds, we have to have. Uh, some guardrails on this, as I believe we do with the amendment to the proposed ordinance. So. With that, I wish them well, and it is incumbent on all of us to do what we can to support them because we're putting. Our money where our collective public person mouth is. So I'll support the project. Deputy Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I support this uh, project. I. Have to say that affordable housing is beyond what we think of as affordable housing. And we're doing the best that we can to help the people that are struggling to get to be in a comfortable position, so. I support. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you all around for comments. Now. All those in support of resolution twenty twenty three dash zero eight as amended. Please signify your approval by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Resolution twenty twenty three dash zero eight as amended has been adopted. We now turn to unfinished business. Mr. Coffield? I don't see any on our agenda. Very good.
Sorry, there is no unfinished business, but there is new business.
I see that. Thank you. That would be next. Madam Clerk, motion twenty twenty three dash eighty.
Motion number twenty twenty three dash eighty authorizing use of seventy four thousand eight hundred and fifty five dollars of fourteen oh six funds. For rental assistance to Lakewood clients served by Metropolitan Development Council.
Thank you very much. And for this particular item, I'll call on Ms. Spear, our long-range and strategic planning manager, to give us some. Overview information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, what you have, starting on page one sixty four, is the uh, agenda bill for motion twenty twenty three dash eighty. And it does have in its discussion the background of this request. This was also brought to council. Uh, on August seventh, and there was discussion and some questions asked at that point. And I will just say right now, we do have the Chief Executive Officer of Metropolitan Development Council, Scott Schubert, here tonight to answer your questions as well. So on July twenty fifth of this year, Lakewood was notified that the MDC had uh, six Lakewood clients. That were at risk of eviction because there was not a sub, uh, timely submitted application. By MDC to Pierce County Human Services for funding. And this is to cover the rent and utilities for these individuals between now and uh, July of twenty twenty four. Lhasa did step up to cover the August cost because when this was brought to us. This was already a month into the process and the landlords had already started to get notification. As did the actual clients that eviction was imminent. So Lase, we would like to thank Lhasa, first of all, for stepping up and, and helping with. The August cost, but we are talking about September into next summer. So um, the ordinance of seven thirty one. Lakewood adopted a few years ago, the fourteen oh six Affordable Housing Sales Tax Credit Program. And although in this year's biennial budget, it's been set aside uh, by city policy for. The major home repair program, major home repair and sewer loan program, and home housing rehabilitation loan program. One of the explicitly stated items that these funds can be used for is rent assistance. Uh, as long as the people are uh, sixty percent area median income or below. Everyone that is involved with the situation at the Metropolitan Development Council are at thirty percent of area median income or below. So they would all qualify for fourteen oh six use should the council decide to do this. There are on pages one sixty five and one sixty six, some answers to questions uh, that were committed. Or sent to me, excuse me, before this was submitted, but I will, I would like to introduce Mr. Schubert to come and answer any additional questions council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Spear. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Thank you so much for letting me share a little bit about MDC. So. Um, just for a little additional context, I've been at MDC for, for about two months now as their CEO. Um, which is exciting, um, but also presented a lot of different challenges, this being one of them. So just wanted to get, provide a little bit of context behind this ask. Um, we have been in collaboration and contact with um. With your city uh, officials as well as Pierce County to really talk about this and how this affects uh, the citizens specifically of Lakewood. Um, I'd like to share a little bit about the citizens with you all. So these are our neighbors. Um, in the city of Lakewood, they're, you know, six residents. Um, we, the. Average age is uh, sixty five. Um, they are mostly on SSI and the rents are reasonable and affordable um, in this area. And so what we're trying to do is to be able to cover them while we really figure out plans in the future for them. So a couple of things that we've been working towards in my two months um, is we're applying for additional funds. Uh, from other sources other than the city of Lakewood. We've been actively working with um, different councils as well. To see what we can do. Um, we've recently hired, actually as of today, a grant writer who started. Um, so ensuring that, that, that this does not happen again. Um, and again, I'm really sorry. That we're bringing this to you at this time. Um, but what I've noticed in researching and looking at this, um, we're talking about. Um, about seventy five thousand dollars. Um, the average cost um. To shelter somebody is around twenty five thousand dollars a year. So when we're talking about the rental assistance, we're really talking about something that is sustainable. And what uh, MDC is committed to is to really work with these residents over the next year. This would um, be delivering the money directly to the landlord, so would keep the money in the city of Lakewood. Um, MDC would not profit off of any of this. Um, we would be working directly with them. Um, to pay the bills um, directly to the landlords. The other thing that I think came up um, is just kind of talking about what's our plan. And so. You know, in terms, in terms of support that we can offer, the average length of stay for the resident. Um, is about five years already. So they are active members in the Lakewood community. Um, and so I wanted to point that out, many of which have been in their places for, you know, past ten years. And so what we are really trying to do is we're going to be deploying foundations of community support uh, dollars. Which is um, our opportunity to continue to provide case management support. That is billed directly to uh, Medica, Medicaid, um, so that we be able to continue to work with them. Everyone has gone through the application. One person does not qualify based off of not having. A disability at the time, but the rest of them do have disabilities and do qualify for that. So that's how we're be able to provide supportive services. Continuous for them, um, which we would not be asking the city of Lakewood to take place, um, or take, take that place. We're also going to be working over the next year to talk about transition model. So we call it graduation model. Um, so we're talking about how do we help them become self-sustained um, through this process? And really using this as an opportunity to say, we've been helping to support you over this period of time. But what is your next steps? How do we support you over this next year to become something to, to help you to become more self-sustained? Um, and then we're also working with other agencies like Lhasa um, to ensure that um, we're able to continue to provide support beyond this. So happy to take any questions that you guys have.
Very good, sir. Welcome to the first two months.
I'm sorry, what do you say?
Welcome to the first two months.
First two months, yeah.
Yeah.
It, it's been a, it's been a whirlwind, but it's been really amazing to see the resiliency of MDC and the, the participants.
Great questions, Mr. Bokey. And then Mr. Branstadter.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one. A quick question. Um. This is done out for twelve months. It crosses in from twenty three to twenty four. How do you protect yourself against rent increases?
Can you, sorry, repeat, how do I protect?
How do you protect yourself against rent increases?
Against rent increases. So these are uh, buildings that we have master leases with, and so. It's something that we've been working with them um, throughout the whole time. So we may see some rent increases, but we don't uh, anticipate that would be substantial. Because these are long-term rentals that we've had with um. The, the landlord. So we have great relationships with them. Thank you.
Mr. Branstadter?
Hey, well. You know, I, I appreciate the fact that. Given the cliff that sort of happened when the funding didn't. Application didn't, it didn't, didn't process. That uh. That you're still advocating on behalf of these residents and that we want to do that. I, I, and, and, you know, while I'm, I'm going to be supportive of the city stepping up in this interim time until that can be done. How confident are you in your assurances that the city won't end up perpetually having? To fund a portion of the support for these folks?
Yes, I definitely appreciate the question. I think um, what I would say is that. Um, I've only been here two months at MDC, but one thing that you will know as you get to know me is I'm a fierce advocate for funding for um, individuals. So we will be actively and aggressively. Working towards funding for um, these participants. Um, but we also, what we're asking for is. This next year to really talk about this with the, the clients. Who have been stabilized in their housing for so long. And so what we can do is work on plans. If, you know, after this time, they're not able to maintain their housing beyond this. So we will work with the landlords, we will work with um, the individuals. And really work on a graduation plan with them. But we do need time in order to make that happen.
So is your. Historical relationship with these landlords, and you indicated that these are properties that you have been. Engaged with for, for, for multiple years. Is it that? The landlords actually. Get their funding for you and you. Place or approve the clients that are there?
Yeah, so it's a master lease, so they have the relationship with MDC. We pay that and then, you know, through the coordinated entry system, we end up uh, placing somebody. And so. Um, you know, the most recent one was March of twenty twenty three was our most recent uh, placement, but these are long-term residents, so. Most of them, you know, over five years um, that they've been at the same place. So we haven't, we've had very minimal um. Uh, disturbances that have come up. Um, so these are people who are really dependable uh, tenants and, you know, haven't had to. Um, involve, you know, much police or um, activity around that. So they're, they're really, you know. Uh, what I'm finding is that a lot of them are on SSI and have like. Very limited income. Um, and so that's, that's what we're finding.
So, and, and these are folks that are on SSI with very limited income. That uh, and their SSI is based on some level of, of a disability. To, to, to move forward. That the um. Uh, and you mentioned that, that is, is, is Medicaid a viable and, and actually historical source of uh. Funding to help these folks?
Yes, absolutely. So we've had, um, most of them are enrolled in the FCS program. Um, and so we also have um, some additional. You know, that we've actually accessed for this particular program. We've accessed um, something called TAPS funds. Which is uh, based off of FCS, which helps uh, pay rental subsidy. So I think worst case scenario is we come up to this, this place and then we would, would be able to help access TAPS again.
So.
Because it's a year.
And, 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 and the. The plan. The expectation, the hope is that uh. In the next funding cycle, which would begin uh. You know, eleven months from now. That uh. Funding would be restored so that these people would have. The same level of permanency of support that they've had for the years that they have been. What unique? Challenges or risks are associated with the one person that you. Called not qualified? Uh, I, I mean, I, I, is, 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 is. Are we sure about that person as we are the other five households?
Yeah, so MDC is committed to work with these individuals, so. You know, it would be something that we are still accessing services, even if we're not able to get um, payment. Through and that's just going to be through like private um. Fundraising that we're gonna, we're gonna do so that we can make sure that person actually has services.
Okay, and if, i- i- if you just let, let me, allow me to ask Ms. Spirit question. Um, Ms. Spirit, you, you, you know, we're looking to do this with, with the fourteen oh six dollars.
Correct.
That we have.
Correct.
This year to be able to go and do that. So I was curious of why in the request for council action, there was a. Several paragraph discussion of CDBG dollars.
There was a discussion on August seventh requesting an, an understanding and description of where. The fourteen oh six funds and CDBG funds have been used historically. So that was a response to a council question.
Okay, but we're not actually approving any action that involves any CDBG dollars on the agenda today.
Correct. It is, it is exclusively fourteen oh six.
Okay, so well, well, thank you and, and thank you for your answers.
Any further questions?
Yes, Mr. Laura Sella. Thank you for coming in. Uh. When was the missed deadline that you were trying to hit?
Yeah, so it was actually prior to me starting. Um, so I believe it was, the applications were due in May. Um, and from my understanding, um, it was a timing issue that happened, so. Uh, between, we were in between CEOs at that time, and so um, I came in June twelfth.
Okay, thank you. And then uh, and this is a question for the council as well as city staff. If it would be possible to approve the first six months of this and then ask that they return and provide. Uh, an update on their success with getting grants going forward. So we have an idea of their performance.
It's the prerogative of the council to do less than the eleven months requested and recommended this evening. Um, I would ask Mr. Schubert though, if that would affect any of the master lease. Conditions or what have you. And uh, also, I'm not aware at this point that MDC would have. The funds to, to do the rest of the five months, but I could certainly be wrong.
Yeah, just to add to that, so we do with the master leases, we do have to sign. The leases which I believe are coming, they're, they're all different times, but most of them are coming up um, the next few. Days. So I think it's September for most of them.
Are they one-year terms? I don't mean to interject. Are they one-year term leases?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, so then that commitment is happening at this point. Are that full year of payments going at that point as well?
So we would do month to month, um, and then, you know, I think if we were not able to make that, then we would work with the landlord, but we are signing, signing a binding agreement with them. So, um, saying that for the next year.
And, and in that case, could the city then fund MDC on a month-to-month basis as well? Uh, to sort of protect and guarantee if MDC were to go under or have any issues where they weren't able to continue to pay out of that fund, uh, if they had other debtors or obligations to pay? That might be a question for Ms. Spear and Mr. Coffield on logistics, whether you can reimburse MDC in arrears, so to speak. Still, you know, pass the ordinance, but you pay it forward on a month-to-month basis to make sure that there's money in reserve if something were to happen. That's the question. Thank you.
And I guess, Mr. Mayor, the, my initial answer would be, again, the council can do however it wishes to handle this issue. I would encourage the full year being distributed to them right away because that takes away any risk to the clients to once again being notified. You're up for eviction for whatever reason. This, this is protecting those that are the Lakewood clients for at least those next 11 months. So they just know from the get-go that this is taken care of. But yes, if, if needed be, if desired, the council could do that where it's a month-to-month disbursement.
Mr. Branstad.
Yeah, yes, tha- thank you, but I, I, I think I agree with Ms. Spear that there is some benefit to making the entire allocation committed to this, given that MDC is committed to that window to fix it. There is, uh, and I would rather not put them in a situation. I, I would like them to solve the problem long-term and not have to keep worrying about short-term milestones and, and having to do that. And quite honestly, there's some cost to our staff of trying to allocate $8,000 a month every month to someone and requiring whatever documentation that would require uh, from, 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 from MDC. I think that's, uh, just not the most efficient way for the city to handle it.
And my quick question doing my stubby pencil napkin math is 75,000 roughly divided by the six residents divided by 12 months is about 1,040 bucks a month per resident?
That's correct.
So when you think of affordable housing, these are one bedroom, maybe two bedrooms, one bedrooms mostly?
Mostly one bedrooms.
Right, so pretty affordable housing.
Absolutely.
Are these particular homes, uh, registered? This may be a Ms. Spear question with the Rental Housing Safety Program. They've been inspected. They're obviously safe, secure and good affordable housing for the investment.
I am not aware of the answer for that, but I will certainly follow up and get it for you.
You know, sir? Have they been inspected by your organization, making sure they're in good shape?
Yes, so we, um, because of our previous funding, that was, that was a requirement. So we would, and we do, uh, search, like not searches. Um, we do case management meetings often with them. So we're also, you know, able to see the, the quality of the, the building and the place and space. So, but there, there's space throughout Lakewood, so not just in one location.
Got it. Okay, very good. Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Spear. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to the opportunity to view public comment in person. Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna move, uh, approval of motion number 2023-80.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bokey that we adopt motion 2023-80, seconded by Councilmember Bell. Any further discussion, Mr. Bokey?
Yeah, I just, I just want to add, I, I looked up the 1406 balance at the end of 2022 was $285,000. And at the end of the first quarter of 2023 was 293,000. So there is a significant balance in this, so you're really talking a little over one quarter of the, of the fund balance that we have and the revenue is 98,000 a year. So this can't be a long-term solution for these, for these folks. But I, I feel comfortable in, in going forward with the full amount for the year to at least. I, I think the important thing about the certainty isn't the certainty for the MDC. It's the certainty for the people who are living in those units. They live uncertain lives and, um, for me, that is, is the crux of it, to give them the certainty that they're going to be okay for the next 11 months.
Very good. Any further comments for the good of the order? I just might note, uh, in response, uh, to the proposed motion and some of the comments we received tonight, uh, had the commenters stayed throughout the meeting, they might actually recognize that Lakewood is taking great efforts to serve the people, including these residents who deserve, uh, a little lift up with regard to housing assistance and the potential 25 future families that have affordable housing in Lakewood. So unfortunately for the commenter who isn't here, uh, this is certainly power going to some of the people. Any further discussion? All those in favor of motion 2023-80, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. You now turn to motion 2023-81.
Motion number 2023-81, ratification and certification of the proclamation of emergency executed by the city manager on August 16th, 2023.
Very good. Thank you. And for this, I'll call in our city attorney, Heidi Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, Heidi Walker, city attorney. And I know sometimes when you think emergency, you think of the earthquake that just happened in California or something on that order. But sometimes it's something that doesn't last all that long, but is very dangerous to some of our residents. And because of that, we, uh, went ahead and in conferring with all the department heads, city manager signed up on an emergency order. And what that really is, is it's not saying, um, what degree of emergency we have. It's saying we have circumstances that warrant not following all the traditional bureaucratic steps sometimes. And in this circumstance, there was actually some evacuation of the area. There was some need for the fire department to take swift and immediate action to deal with the fire. And I think we've seen enough to know that, um, even though we don't get them locally, wildfires can get out of control pretty quickly. And so for that reason, the emergency order, uh, was authorized by the manager and now requires, um, uh, authorization now by the council. And you aren't required to do that, but, um, this was on advice of department directors and the city attorney. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
Very good. Any questions of Ms. Walker? Very good. Well, thank you very much for that. I have a motion to adopt motion 2023-81. I'm sorry, somebody else?
I forgot to mention, I will be coming back to you when we believe we've covered all of the bases because it's a little bit like a box. You open up the emergency and then you close the emergency.
Very good.
We don't like to leave the manager with emergency powers for any longer than absolutely necessary.
Prefer not. Yeah, I agree. Yeah, prefer not. Okay, do I have a motion to adopt motion 2023-81? It's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by Councilmember Laura Sella, that we adopt motion 2023-81 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion 2023-81 has been adopted. And now before we turn to reports by the city manager, it is, uh, the nine o'clock hour. I suggest we take about a three-minute recess. We can stretch for a minute. It's been two hours. And before we engage in another two-hour conversation with Mr. Coffield, we'll probably need a stretch break. So it will be a recess for, we'll say four minutes.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, we're we're back at it from recess briefly. I try to give a little bit of a break since we go a couple of hours. And now we have reports by Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor Deputy Mayor Councilmembers. Good evening again. First off, I'd like to call upon our assistant to the city manager, Michael Vargas. I was going to give you an update on the work that he undertook working with a team, both internal and external, specific to a city hall redesign study. And the goal there was to try and consolidate our city hall operations from three floors to two or even two and a half floors. I'll just cut to the chase in that we learned that the building poses some challenges and is not cooperative in some ways when it comes to that. And resulting in any of the options that we looked at and developed, quite frankly, just being cost prohibitive. And I hate to say this, but you know, the punchline is a recommendation is not to do is to do nothing. With the exception that Congresswoman Strickland has requested some additional space. And so our next follow up would be to evaluate how to accommodate that. But with that, again, Mr. Vargas and his team, including again, both both individuals, internal to our organization and external, did a really good job in evaluating these. And at the very least, we wanted to share that with you. So with that, Mr. Vargas, I will turn the mic over to you. Thank you.
For a brief overview on the recommendation to do nothing.
I don't know about brief, but good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council members. Michael Vargas here zooming in and I'm actually joined virtually as well with Ms. Kim Doyle and Alexis Bauer from the consultant architectural firm McKenzie that the city worked with to produce the report before you all tonight. So order of operations, I'll go over the cover memo in your packet, but then I will hand it over to Kim and Alexis to review the two sets of floor plans, which were ultimately the the final ones we landed on. So with that, I'm going to start on page one seventy one of your packet. Like the city manager was saying, the purpose of the this ARPA funded city council directive, the city hall redesign studies, what we've been calling it, is to explore the space needs of departments housed at city hall. To see if we can really consolidate operations down to just two floors. A bit of a history lesson, I believe, the original intent of city hall and was first constructed was to have a full service in house operations here at the city, which ended up not being the case. But continuing on here for the background, the city council authorized the study about more than a year ago. And really, on top of looking how to consolidate down the two floors, we also explored other trends that were pretty, pretty recent in the in the world of work, such as teleworking trends. But also trying to accommodate the design, the original intent and design of the building as well as future departmental needs since teleworking and hoteling, as it's called, being able to work at several workstations. You know, throughout your time here at city hall, that's those are becoming more and more the the normal trend here. So the funding was authorized from $100,000 from the ARPA ARPA funds for the completion of the study. And the normal RFQ process when undertaking such a big project was conducted. I think pretty unique to this is that a panel of executive leadership team members, which I call the stakeholder team, which comprised of executive leadership team members and also expert staff manage the project as representatives for city hall. So after every milestone, which will go through the scope of work, there was a touch point base where the entire group, the stakeholder team sat down, reviewed and provide provided edits and comments. So this was pretty, pretty hands on undertaking here. So looking on page one seventy two now, I'll go over the scope of work here. The which everything kicked off with a meeting between the consultants and the stakeholder team to set the overarching themes and direction of the study. Aka trying to get down to two floors. We also, we wanted to get a feel for what city hall staff, where they sort of stood on this on this project as well. So we actually did an entire sent out a survey to all of all the folks who work at city hall in order to get gauge. You know, where they wanted to see sort of operations go at city hall, which not unsurprisingly, we found out through these these initial meetings and survey that really we probably are, according to consultants, we are unique in that we have too much space at city hall. Whereas a lot of other municipalities undertaking this this sort of study are working with too little. We we have too much here. Going through here, the consultants also did a full review of our MEP and electrical systems at city hall, just to understand the state of the building. If and if there's anything else that needed to be changed in order to accommodate, you know, a future tenant possibly on the third floor. We did program interviews in which the consultant sat down and did very in depth meetings with all department directors in order to acquire their space needs. In terms of meeting space, office space, equipment and file storage, as well as the possibilities of shared workspaces since telework arrangements are pretty, pretty common across staff at city hall who can telework. So at this step, we actually got a total square footage was calculated for each department, what their what their their footprint is. After that, synthesizing the results of the interviews with the with the initial kickoff meetings and surveys. And a stacking plan was created, which shows adjacencies, which departments would be next to which across two floors. And then we created the in the arc McKenzie created three sets of floor plans, a low, medium and a high cost floor plan. Each floor plan consolidated departments down to the first two floors with the third floor completely vacated. Which allows for, you know, perhaps moving in community partners there in the future. And after that, we created cost estimates for each of the three floor plans. And so at this point, having created three sets of floor plans, three cost estimates for each. City leadership reviewed everything so far and really wanted to hone in on the low impact floor plan, which was the least costly to construct since it had the least structural changes. While still getting the job done in terms of city operations. We really wanted to value engineer that proposition. So we did another round of cost estimating to get that get that to a better spot and also deploy the development of a two and a half floor plan. Which, as its name suggests, only vacates half of the third floor for use possibly with with congressional office space. And so I'll go ahead and hand it off to Alexis and Kim to go over the two sets of floor plans that were that ended up being the the final deliverables here. Thanks.
Hello there. Again, this is Alexis Bauer with McKenzie. Thank you so much for the opportunity to meet with you all this evening. As Michael had mentioned, we did have the opportunity to look at continuing to value engineer that low impact floor plan even more so. So there are enlarged floor plans in your packet on page, starting on page two fifty two through two fifty four for the revised low impact floor plan. And as as we mentioned, that plan really sought to minimize the number of architectural changes while still improving overall efficiency within the space. So on neither the low impact floor plan and the two and a half floor plan, did we make any changes to the garage space? So the changes are really evident on page two fifty three that show the first floor. So in this iteration, Parks and Recreation, Community Services, Human Resources and the Municipal Court all remain on the first floor. And approximately their same locations with the legal staff integrated in with HR and IT staff moving up to the second floor. This plan also provided a large PRCS storage room by combining two smaller rooms. And also look to close off the front counter space so that would become internal to yours. Your tenant space because the third floor tenants would need to have access to that central stairway. So we wanted to make sure your space remained secure. And and as well as adding a new door to the municipal court area to maintain the separation of court and prosecutors from the defense meeting spaces. Some other changes on the first floor also includes some minor modifications to create a new mayor and city council office in the council chambers, replacing the current food preparation area. If you go next to page two fifty four, you can see some of the recommendations for the second floor space. In that plan, we were combining the city manager's office, CED, PWE and the administrative services, including finance and IT to all be located on the second floor. CED is in between PWE, which is on the west wing and the city manager's office administrative services on the west, on the east wing, excuse me. This also incorporated a new secure door and a wall separating part of the current public hallway and incorporating that into the tenant space and creating a new large conference room that would be open to the public. And then the entire third floor would remain vacant. As we discussed, looking again at even more economical solution that still met the city's goals for efficiency was to look at the two and a half floor plan option. And those plans can be found on pages two fifty five through two fifty eight. Again, no changes were made to the garage floor. And on two fifty six, you can see the first floor plan. So with this, we really sought to make only the absolutely necessary architectural plan changes to provide adequate separation between the municipal court and the prosecutor's office, as well as providing access to third floor tenant spaces and the city council area. So the same adjacencies that were in place on the second floor option remained in place on the two and a half floor option. And next on page two fifty two on the second floor, that floor remains very similar to how it is now with Public Works and Engineering and Community Economic Development on that floor and absolutely no structural changes. And then on the third floor, on the next page on two fifty eight, we consolidated the city manager's office administrative services, including finance and IT and the legal on the third floor of the west wing. And then the only new structural changes would be to provide new secure doors and vestibules that separate the east and the west wing of the building to allow space for a new tenant on the east wing. The public hallway also remains common for both city staff and the new tenant space on the two and a half floor plan. So that concludes some of the plan changes that were made as part of that effort.
Opportunity for a quick question or so? Maybe I missed it here, but looking at the options. Seems to me we'd want to figure out a way to maintain you know, a welcoming sort of face to the public on the first floor. Do do these either plans provide for that? And to the extent we're trying to consolidate space to be efficient and open up space in the third floor, there's some value to the public there because if we had a tenant that paid, it might actually supplement the operating costs of the building. I get that. I wouldn't want to lose the the public's feeling that this is their building and their access somehow on a first floor basis. Do we lose that or not?
No, we do not. Both in the two and a half floor plan, the public service counter on the first floor does remain open to the public. When we were talking about closing it off, it was really at the back side of it so that no, none of the tenants would have access to the internal workings of your space and the public service counter on the second floor. Where CED is also would remain open to the public on the two and a half floor plan.
Great. Any further Michael on that?
Yeah. And with that, I mean, yeah, city manager already covered the costs here, but if you look at the final page of your memo there on table A, we have the total cost to construct the revised two floor plan at about 1.1 million. And then for the two and a half floor plan, total cost is about $355,000.
How much for the first option? How many million?
1.1.
How many units of affordable housing do we get for that? Don't just ask him, sorry.
Exactly. Which leads to the recommendation here as the city manager cover is recommended that the city not move forward to consolidate city hall operations from two floors to two or even two and a half. Given the layout and construction costs pose challenges and, you know, bang for buck, we could probably use those resources elsewhere. The study highlighted that the design and layout of city hall does not make it conducive to a remodel of any kind. However, Congresswoman Strickland's office, who already has office space on the third floor, has an interest in expanding their existing office space on the third floor floor. So it is recommended that a tenant improvement study be conducted to understand the costs of accommodating additional congressional office space and this could occur within the twenty three to twenty four timeline.
How much are we talking for that? And maybe again, I missed that. How much is that extra study money?
That is not included in in this study. That would be a separate undertaking. I can get provide the a cost estimate for that.
Okay, I get it. I would have some thoughts on that, but yeah, I get it. As a guy who does commercial real estate for a living, one might think that would be a negotiated item between tenant and landlord, but I get it.
I'll just say, Mayor and Council, our our goal here was to truly try and consolidate the two stories, but it the find the numbers just stone pencil. And even with a watered down approach, if you will, I don't think it's worth the endeavor. Plus with the upcoming biennial budget, I know funds are going to be tight and I know based on your priorities, quite frankly, I'll just be right up front with you. I don't see this anywhere within your priorities as a release to something to be doing. Also, doing it just to do it, I don't think is worthwhile because I don't see us recognizing any types of economies of scale in terms of how we deliver services as well. It's a really tough building, you know, when this building was built, you know, over 20 years ago. At the time, it certainly was built to accommodate how services were at that point in time, as Mr. Vargas pointed out. This building was built because at one time, I know a few previous city councils wanted to take on other municipal services that just never happened. But at this point in time, in terms of the way we're using the building, I think it's okay. But to spend millions and millions of dollars to, you know, you know, it's kind of like where we have a solution in search of a problem and I and then on top of that, we are undertaking that huge state mandated HVAC update. And so I think it would be beneficial for us to finish that first as well. So that's kind of my closing remarks.
I read. I appreciate. Thank you all for the work. I mean, I love pictures and space planning. Actually, I do. And so it's kind of fun to see what you're able to kind of come up with as a possibility, which is a good part of the exercise. Mr. Brandstetter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the do nothing recommendation, which is not really do nothing, but it's don't do anything big. Are there any inefficiencies, either operationally or utility wise or environmentally that we're going to perpetuate by just continuing to operate as we have been?
I'll take that one. At this point in time, no council member brand setter. There's there's really, we've got plenty of elbow space. So the answer is no.
Okay. And are there any city employees that are at satellite locations that conceivably could come to the space that we have a plethora of?
And actually, council member, that that does happen. It's been happening for years. For example, you know, A- and actually, council member, so that that does happen. It's been happening for years. For example, you know, parks and recreation or maintenance positions, you know, they come into city hall if they need to do work and such. So that's already, that's already happening, or even police and vice versa. So um, that that's 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 already happening. So.
And it it wasn't envisioned that a uh, a senior center of some size could be uh, in in incorporated on the first floor here.
Yeah, we we did. We did look at that, Councilmember Brandstetter, but I'll just, I'm just gonna be point bl- pointly blank, uh, pointly blunt with you. The building is not cooperative to allow us to do that, uh, because we got to take down walls and move things and it just I'm just being, I'm just being right up front with you. It's not, it just won't work. I'm not trying to be a barrier here. Um, I know I'm a wet blanket here, but it's just not, it's just not a it's just not.
So are are we insured if the mother nature should do something that would be help us to need a new building?
Oh, I I have no comment on that, Councilmember Brandstetter. If that was to happen, that why I just want to say for the record, that would be an act of God and the city manager is not involved in that.
I see. Well, okay, it doesn't fall under your emergency powers that you temporarily have. Okay.
I I I will say though, um, you you know, the council chambers works very, very well. It doesn't allow for flexibility because of the the slope here. Um, and by the way, we did look at that and that's several million dollars to dig up all of this and replace it. Um, um, also the court, the courtroom from the Sally Port down in the garage up to the courtroom and you know, they have a couple of courtrooms, one for regular court, one for video arraignment, one for, you know, and veterans court. The court actually works very, very well. So the two ends of the building work very well. It's just the middle part. It's it's just a different environment than, you know, when the how how we are today and
Yeah.
it's kind of what we get. It's it is a beautiful building. It's great to work at and uh, you know, we, you know, from a staff perspective, we do have some flexibility. But to try and get to two floors at this point in time, just being upfront with you, it just doesn't work. And I do want to thank Mr. Vargas and McKenzie um, and Alexis and Kim because they did an absolutely outstanding job um, being very, very patient with us throughout this process as well, and also for being brutally honest with us as we were going through this process.
Well, if you were dealing with Mr. Caulfield, I completely agree and understand the need for patience. So thank you for being involved in the process. Very good. Thanks. Mr. Caulfield, anything further? Are you done?
Just a couple of quick items if I if I could, Mayor. Um, you know, uh, first of all, you know, we had a bit of an event on Wednesday evening that actually extended into Friday and um, I I just want to recognize you know, those agencies that were involved in this because it was a level of communication and collaboration, quite frankly, second to none. Of course, of course, first and foremost, the West Pierce Fire District and their firefighters and their leadership and uh, Deputy Chief uh, Hallie McCurdy is with us this evening. And um, they were just absolutely, I mean, incredible. Um, you know, just heroes, all of them out there dealing with that and uh, the challenges that they had to address. Um, likewise, uh, a number of other fire departments also responded to provide assistance um, as well as Department of Natural Resources, who came out first with some helicopters that finally was able to uh, get the fire under some level of control. So then the fire district could then go in and um, further uh, get it, get it all consolidated and 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 finally put out. And um, the uh, also the fire district, um, you know, they were out there twenty four seven for about two and a half days. They had uh, around the clock fire watches going on as well. And then D N R brought out some uh, heavy equipment to help further enhance the fire lines that the fire district and other fire departments have put up, but really just want to thank the fire district for all of their effort. It was certainly all hands on deck on that. Uh, likewise, the Lakewood Police Department, uh, them and the fire district immediately uh, set up a unified command post on site. And then another one was established to help coordinate um, all the resources coming in and out, um, including um, the evacuation. I would like to think that we did a little bit of overcommunication and that the city put out information or code red went out, social media. Likewise, on the fire district side, we also contacted Pierce County D E M, who also put out alerts. So people got two, three, four alerts. Um, and I think in an incident like this, you can't, you know, eh, there's not enough communication. Um, initially, the um, call to evacuate was in a much larger area. But again, that was out of an abundance of caution until the fire district could really say that, yeah, okay, we can pull it back a little bit and then they and then it got pulled back a few hours later. Um, also want to thank Ron Banner and the Clover Park School District. Um, Superintendent Banner immediately made available Thomas Middle School and Lakes High School for evacuation purposes. Uh, the American Red Cross came in once again and uh, helped provide um, some food and water and other for some of the folks who did actually uh, move to one of those evacuation sites for a short period of time. Um, and also Pierce Transit, who had buses standing by in the event that if that fire did get a little out of control, we would have had to evacuate a good number of more people. And so um, we're all uh, ready and 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 able to do that. And then um, the West Pierce Emergency Management Coalition, of which the city is a part of, the district is a part of, Stillicum and University Place and um, actually uh, Chief McCurdy is a a key leader in that and that all came together um, to help coordinate um, the response and all of the resources that were brought to the table. And then probably most importantly, you know, would like to thank uh, the community um, for just their understanding patience. And most importantly, actually evacuating and not putting up a fight, but recognizing that there was a danger and being so cooperative um, under such um, distressing times. So we do appreciate that and 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 we value that. Um, but again, uh, from my perspective, and I know I'm talking with Chief Sharp and Chief Smith and uh, Chief McCurdy and others, that again, the communication and the collaboration between all the agencies was quite frankly seamless. And uh, that's just a reflection of the ongoing work that we do day in and day out. So in a major emergency like this does occur, again, it works. We all come together and get stuff done. So I just wanted to pass that, pass that on to you. Um, um, that fire is uh, is still under investigation and uh, so um, if and when we have something to report on that, we'll be sure to share that with 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 the council. Um, wanted to let you know that um, there will be no Saturday retreat for your legislative agenda. We were able to figure it out to do it on your first study session, October, on October ninth. It probably will result in the use of your fifth Monday in October. Um, but we were able to work some things around. So that that meeting will be October ninth. And something Mayor and you and your colleagues might want to think about would be maybe kick that meeting off at six P M. And if so, we could bring in dinner just to kind of just to kind of get an early start, just to kind of get an early start on that. Um, so I'll I'll throw that out. If that's something the council wants to do, just let us know and and we can, we can, we can do that for you. Also, just a heads up at um, your Fiesta de la Familia event, which is on September ninth. Um, a representative from the Mexican consulate up in Seattle is going to come down and participate in that. And uh, once we have more information on that, we'll be sure to let you know and uh, hopefully we can help facilitate some introductions um, at that event between the mayor and the council members um, when that individual and or their representatives do do come down, but you're certainly on people's radar. I'll just uh, I'll just say that. Um, also our sister city Gimay, they are coming for a visit. They're going to be sending um, at least ten individuals to come visit and we believe it will be as part of Summer Fest. That's when we invited them. And uh, so more to come on that, but we're very, very excited to um, have them come and um, you know, as you know, some of us went back and visited with them back in May. So um, this is a great relationship and the fact that they responded so quickly and want to come back in two thousand twenty four, I think is a real positive reflection on all of you. Um, and then um, just I'll just flip through here. So Farmer's Market, another uh, second to last concert this Tuesday. It'll be a country band. And um, also this Wednesday uh, from noon to ten, so all day, ten hour shift there. Um, the uh, Chief Smith and uh, his command team are going to be um, sponsoring an uh, a police officer appreciation barbecue for all shifts. It'll be from noon to ten. So if you want to stop by and have a hot dog or a hamburger and say hello. It's the twenty third, so Wednesday, Wednesday, the twenty third from noon to um, ten P M. And eh, you know, just as a heads up, you know, so if you come by about noon or one, day shift will be on. Swing shift comes on around five o'clock and then Graves comes on about eight fifteen. So.
Brandon could put that out on our calendars.
Yep.
Where?
The police station.
Yeah, so we'll get that on our calendars and then you can show up. That'd be great. So.
Um, and then on August twenty sixth is the wall raising for the Thomas Habitat for Humanity Home. And I think uh, there's a link that I provided you to. If you want to go and uh, help out with that, um, you'll have to sign up. And then the city clerk uh, just informed me that uh, the Thornwood Castle is available either on Friday, November third or Friday, November seventeenth for a joint event with the two two striker brigade. So maybe if you could check your calendars on that and let us know and uh, we'll then check with the two two to see if that works and um, we can get that scheduled as well.
Would think the third might be better because otherwise you're getting close to
Um, yeah.
holiday stuff, but actually the seventeenth might be better for me. I'm looking at my calendar here.
So that's what we need.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's the, what's the date?
You say the seventeenth Friday, that would be better for me, only because my kid is running the New York Marathon and November third, I just saw and I have to go be there apparently.
Yep. So you're telling the rest of the council, it's got to be November seventeenth. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, so I'm hearing.
Councilor.
I'll be here.
Okay. You may get work. Okay. All right. November seventeenth it is. We will reach out to the two two.
Great.
And we will go from there. All right.
Okay.
And yes, Mayor, there will be snacks at that event because it's a dinner event.
Exactly. Well, I heard you're cooking, so that's a good.
No, that would not be a good thing. No, that would not be a good thing. So with that, that's my report.
Any questions, Mr. Caulfield? A comment from the deputy mayor.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a pass on a comment that I got. Thanking the city and the first responders for such a fast response and a job well done. They, everybody was really pleased with the results of that and I just want to make sure that you got that message.
Yes, and we thank you for coming tonight. I think we're all echoing the deputy mayor's thanks and comments. You guys did a fabulous job. The communication was great. So, yeah, it worked out as well as it could for sure. Okay, turning to city council comments, how about uh, Councilmember Laura Sella will start you off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I will start by echoing what uh, Deputy Mayor Moss said. Uh, thank you to Wes Pierce for all the uh, all the work to keep us safe, as well as the other local fire departments, Lakewood P D and our friends that uh, at uh, Department of Natural Resources. I had a chance to talk to a friend of mine and it turns out he was in charge of dispatching the helicopters and the uh, the uh, the heavy equipment that came out. So um, big thanks to to everyone who is here. It's really amazing that had such great coordination that resulted in no structures lost or 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 people hurt. Uh, other than I heard there were two firefighters that had uh, heat related illness. Are they doing better? Yeah, I I see a thumbs up from the back. That's that's great to hear. So thank you to them. Um, and thank you to the communications staff, uh, Bryn Grimley and her, her team did a great job of keeping folks informed. Uh, there was lots of good commentary uh, on social media that I followed. Um, so so good stuff there. Uh, in regards to uh, issues on like Stillicum with garbage and safety and and policing, that sort of thing. I I know the city does a lot of data driven decision making. So the more data we can give them through the My Lakewood three one one app, the more effective they can be. So I encourage everyone to report issues as they come up. Uh, I for one uh, do that often in my neighborhood. So and and it gets results. So. Let's see, uh, one last thing uh, from Wes Pierce. I know we had a an excellent report out on the Jamestown Estates fire uh, at some point. It might be beneficial to have a report out on the the Wahop fire as well to understand the effort that went into it and the process and and just what they've learned through the investigation. Um, so I would appreciate that. Uh, I don't know if other, but other members of council feel the same way, but it could be beneficial. Uh, and then lastly, uh, I had uh, an individual reach out to ask about whether the city would be hosting a Juneteenth celebration next year. Uh, and it's on a Wednesday, so it might be something they consider for our Parks Department, uh, maybe even doing something at Fort Stillicum Park. Uh, being that it's midweek and it's not going to interfere with uh, Farmer's Market or anything like that.
Yeah.
Something to to think about.
Very good. Good comment. Councilmember Brandstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I think that I was also in receipt of many public comments that were um, complimentary of the work of the fire department and of the city and of the the overall response uh, to to the fire in Fort Stillicum Park. Um, and pe- people were particularly complimentary about the uh, the communications flow to 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 folks in the city in terms of um, well knowing that they may or whether they were and how they, how they were affected, being able to go and do that. Uh, and acknowledging the the heat that day that 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 made the the work of the responders that were there doing the work of um, uh, you you know, even more going on. Um, and I was glad to see that the that that the that the school district became a a a partner in our, in our, in our efforts to 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 ser- serve the community in that respect to to be going on. And uh, now we will have to brace ourselves for the the impatience of getting everything back to just like it was and 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 but in fact, if if we give it some time, it'll come back even better than it was because we'll we'll uh, done some things with uh, some things that'll that'll allow it to grow back naturally and uh, we'll go on. And I was certainly glad that they were able to both. Certainly no residents were impacted, but also that the fire didn't reach the South Hillside with that was heavily forested and we we didn't lose really any significant trees to be able to go and do that. Staying on the uh, the the topic of parks, I guess I was uh, I really struggle with having to keep my mouth shut with with all of this cussing about Edgewater Park. You know, uh, and that, you know, that that this this mysterious parking lot that's going to appear and 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 being able to go and do that. And uh, quite honestly, not being able to fully disclose how the all the actions regarding that property came about and what might have been earlier if the that we tried to do. But on a positive side, where you talk about planning and master plans for parks. Um, Saturday I went to Springbrook Park. Where where the Springbrook Community, Springbrook Connection sponsors sort of an end of summer, let's get together and do things with some food. And there were some folks that were there to do that. But it was also a good idea to see how having a good master plan for a park um, and how it's coming together with the 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 grass is now in and you can see what you you can, you can visualize how the new community garden will be. And uh, you know, where there will be a dog park and the and and the 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 better recreational activities for youth of all ages from small youth to folks that want to play basketball to 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 a soccer field and and it goes on. And it was uh, a, you know, and it was a a situation of where there were some folks who were there as you know, they weren't really vendors because they weren't selling things, but they were, they 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 were, they were, they were service providers and information providers, uh, you know, th- those of them that were there. I know that's, I truly noted that Sound Transit had a uh, rather extensive, but also clearly understandable um, pieces of information that they were putting out about the mobility particularly sidewalk and projects that they were going to provide in that neighborhood uh, sta- starting on forty seventh and including uh, you know, even on the projects on the other side or Bridge Board to be able to go and do that. And they and they put it out in a very uh, you know, uh, understandable way that that that, you know, and while timelines with Sound Transit are you know, you're not always as firm as 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 we'd like. That that was clear that their their intent of how to help that community and and you know, as as part of their Lakewood Station outreach is uh, that they're that they're committed to it, to be able to go through and do that. Uh, perhaps the only thing that would have been been better would it would have been if there'd been some water in the creek. But the but but it what, it is an example of how when you develop a master plan with community input that um, people will get what they wanted and. That um, people will get what they wanted and, 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 and the park will have things that people will use, you know. The, the, you know, the, you know, the, the pump track and the, the dog park and the, and the, and the all abilities playground and that is all the. You know, it's just, it's just, it's something that. Many people who were there that I talked to voiced appreciation for how the park had been. Developed and grown and it was. A couple of things about getting that park developed is that, you know, it is a place of where we. Acquired three properties to include one that was. While I don't think we had to use eminent domain, it was really an adverse acquisition property, but it, but it. Goes on to, to do that. So, 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 so I, so I think that, you know, something in Edgewater Park. We, when, once we get and we know what. What the footprint is that we have to work with. You know, a master plan that'll serve the community, but also the local neighborhood is definitely doable. Uh. Because we've uh, shown we can do that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, great points, Councilmember, Councilmember Brandsdeter. I would encourage the public to take a look at the Parks Master Plan, to look at those things, become acquainted with them. Know what we've been talking about currently and then like the mayor mentioned for actually years. Um, so these are really good things and I love Springbrook Park. I'm glad that you went there. I'm sad I missed that this weekend. Um, I also wanted to just say that I really, really appreciate. Um, the collaboration, the synchronicity that happened with uh, the fire this week, last week. I thought the communication was fabulous. Was really good. Um, everybody seemed to know about it besides on all the city pages, the West Pierce pages. Uh, and then the community groups. And so I thought that that was really good way to get the information out. But I really want to encourage everybody to really to, to register for code red. It's amazing. It gets, you get the alert. It gets a little scary. But at least you get it. You know what to do. It keeps a community alert, involved and aware of what's happening. So again, I just wanted to encourage everyone to register for that, for code red. And then to thank all that were involved for just an amazing response. And I, my kid went out and checked it out to make sure it was all out. So it's verified there too. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Bokey. You're fine. Very nice. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I do, I, I did also attend the Springbrook. Uh, event and it was hilarious. They had a professional wrestle in that as their. It was so funny. Yeah, it was fun. It was, the kids were all in awe over that. And the boo, and the people that were there, they were there for more or less for a resource. To the public, letting them know what was available to them for the schools and so forth. So that was a good thing. I had an opportunity to go to the Farmer's Market on the hardest day we had so far. And I talked to a lot of the, the vendors there. They were the ones that I spoke with said, they've been coming to this one ever since it started. And this is their favorite one. So, good. Yes. And that's all I have.
Great. Well, just a couple of things. I had the opportunity to go to the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. Celebration with Dolly Parton on Tuesday at the Panteras Theater in downtown Tacoma. And it was a fabulous gathering of uh, lots of funding partners, including Lakewood Rotary and. They recognized uh, certainly the city of Lakewood as a funding partner and all the others. The uh, event was emceed by um, Danny Heck, our. Uh, erstwhile Lieutenant Governor and the woman who is the Executive Director for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library in Washington. And they did a fabulous job putting it all together. And I have to say. Um, you know, number one, I like country music and I think Dolly Parton's an amazing person in the country music scene, but she's an amazing human being. And she got up and spoke from her heart about her upbringing and why. She wanted to bring literacy to basically East Tennessee. It was kind of a thought and comment about, you know, her daddy didn't know how to read and write and she really wanted to address that. By doing something positive with the resources that she was given. And how that has just kind of spread like wildfire around the country. So it was really, you know, a, a great. Heartwarming event and you realize that there really is good stuff that goes on in this world and, and to be part of that as a city. Uh, made me proud. So thank you all for your support of that. And I think we're going to make great strides forward for. Youth in Lakewood through early learning and literacy. And then my only final comment tonight on the Edgewater Park thing, you know, it's interesting. And also frustrating that there is so much rumor and innuendo that spins out of control to the point where neighbors. Uh, are absolutely incensed and frustrated over something that they believe to be true, which may not be the case. And I think uh, at the heart of every sort of consternation or dispute, there's a. Gap in communication at some level. So to the extent we can be better communicators, I know we're in litigation. But we can talk about on the public website what the plan is for Edgewater Park. And I know we talked about that there's going to be further. Planning and public involvement with regard to the legacy plan. Let's get that out there. If it's not out there, it needs to be. If it is out there, I apologize if I haven't seen it. But the fact that we're getting so much commentary about things that may or may not be factual. Uh, much of which, in my humble opinion, was not factual tonight. That's frustrating, especially because many of these folks, they know us and they can reach us. Uh, and if we're not as accessible as we should be, well, shame on us. And we need to make sure that we're available to address some of these issues before blood starts to boil and people get really frustrated. And that's really not what local government should be about. We should avoid frustration, address the questions quick. Uh, and uh, put out factual information as best we can, given the circumstances that we're in. Uh, that I discussed and I hope appropriately in your mind, because I try to not overstep my bounds as your mayor here, but I think it's important to. Provide some context on occasion. So those are my thoughts and thank you again for your attention tonight. Good work. And again, thank you, Chief, for coming tonight. Extend our well wishes to your entire department and thanks for a job well done. Word, Jurn.